Okay, all right, the light is on and welcome folks this evening. So I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us for the Pledge Allegiance to the Fire?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Bolson.
Here.
Sykes.
Yep.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Oops.
All right. Well, today is September 11th. Been 18 years since that horrific event that happened. And I think most, everybody can remember that, that morning that that happened. So we did have a wonderful event, very well attended, across the street at the courthouse and in front of here at City Hall. And most of our first responders were there and with the trucks and the big ladder truck. And it was wonderful to be able to participate in that memorial event. And also because it was an event to be able to recognize and pay tribute to the many first responders that lost their lives on that very sad day in September 11th, 2001. So with that, I will read a proclamation. And this is September 11th Remembrance Day, September 11th, 2019. Whereas nearly 3,000 citizens of the United States of America were killed on September 11th, 2001, in New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington DC as a result of unprovoked terrorist attacks. And whereas we pay tribute to the men and women who perished and reflect on the bravery and courage of arts civilian and military first responders and emergency personnel for their quick and selfless actions. And whereas it is also important to remember the countless families who were forever changed by the loss of a loved one because of these horrendous acts, attacks. And whereas today marks the 18th anniversary of that fateful day, which renewed patriotism throughout the nation and spurred American citizens to civic action. And whereas throughout the state of Oregon, individuals, organizations, and communities will gather on this 18th anniversary and honor our nation and the memory of those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. Now therefore, I Sheran Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2019 to be September 11th Remembrance Day in Albany and invite all residents to remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause taken from them. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of September 2019. At the event today, we were presented from the American Legion Post 10 with the flag for remembrance of September 11th. So that was very nice of the American Legion. They did a wonderful event paying tribute to everyone. So with that, you know, there's, not very often does September 11th land on our council meeting night. So I think I remember maybe years back it did one time. So if we can just kind of have a little moment of silence so we can really pay respect and really kind of reflect on our first responders, on how important they are to our everyday life and our public safety we have in our community. Thank you, everyone. Okay, with that, so this is kind of quite timely. Next is a special presentation. And this is from our fire department and Chief Bradner. This is probably going to be your last time doing awards for...
Yes. One more chance.
Yep, he's going to be retiring at the end of this month and we are greatly going to miss him. And one thing that I really commend you is he has always been there for his team and always recognizing, you know, when some of his fire department goes above and beyond their call of service. So we are very fortunate in Albany for our public safety services and we've got great leadership. And we're going to miss Chief Bradner, so.
All right, well, thank you, Sheran Canopa and City Council. So in the early morning hours of July 11th, 2019, Albany firefighters responded to an individual who had climbed over the edge of the Third Street Bridge over the Kalapuyia River and shimmyed her way down a sign that was there and was hanging by the sign about 60 feet above the water. It seems fitting and appropriate that tonight on September 11th, in light of all the events that you referred to, that we would recognize these individuals. So if I could have the following individuals, please come forward. Battalion Chief Ryan Bond. Lieutenant Mark Burnt. Lieutenant Ben Cooper. Lieutenant Ray Waldridge. Lieutenant John Zimmerman. Apparatus Operator Steve Croftcheck. Apparatus Operator Steve Sermeyer. Apparatus Operator Ron Whackford. Firefighter Shane Castle. Firefighter Matt D. Francisco. Firefighter Jessica Jakovic. Firefighter Tim Hart. Firefighter Hans Reerslev. Firefighter Brian Cashman. So firefighters have to be trained and ready to deal with any situation, from a house fire to a heart attack to a technical rescue call. Firefighters must have the knowledge, skills, and abilities to mitigate every situation and return order out of chaos. Unfortunately, people sometimes put themselves into perilous situations that require emergency life-saving intervention. In July, one such individual had done that with no way to climb back over the bridge and certain disaster and probable death if she dropped to the rocks and river below. This crew used their training and expertise to rescue her before she fell. So I'd like to invite everyone to direct your attention to the screen. These are the final, about two and a half minutes of that rescue. The crew had been on it for an extended period of time to get to this point, but I felt So while the video is playing and the rescue is concluding, I'll state that fortunately this type of call doesn't happen very often. We refer to these calls as low-frequency, high-risk events. They don't happen very often, but they, when they do happen, they put our personnel at great risk. Our firefighter that was hanging and suspended, he was in that same precarious location as that individual and with the potential of great harm to him. So after this response, I heard other firefighters say, state that this was a once-in-a-career type of a call that occurs. Firefighters practice and train for calls just such as this, and their efforts deserve recognition with a unit citation. A unit citation is given to a group of firefighters who work together to complete a task that required a team approach to reach a successful outcome. The other individuals who also deserve recognition on this call were the Albany police officers who assisted. They talked with this distraught individual prior to our arrival and kept her calm throughout so our personnel up here today could focus on performing the rescue safely. I'd like to mention that our two departments worked together very well to achieve a successful outcome, that of saving the life of an individual. So it is my honor tonight to recognize the members of the Albany Fire Department with a unit citation. When I call your name, would you please come forward to receive your unit citation ribbon, a certification, and a chief's challenge coin? Battalion Chief Ryan Bond. Lieutenant Ray Waldridge. Apparatus Operator Steve Sermeyer. Apparatus Operator Steve Croftcheck. Apparatus Operator Ron Whackford. Firefighter Tim Hart. Firefighter Hans Reerslev. Okay, the last person I want to recognize tonight is firefighter Ryan Lawrence. Ryan Lawrence, you should come join me over here, please. So Ryan was a firefighter that went over the edge and was suspended in the air by the rope system that the crew helped put together. He secured the trapped individual with a harness, attached her to the rope haul system, calmly helped her off the sign, and then holding on to her, he helped her as she was hoisted to the top of the bridge and successfully over the side. For this, in addition to a unit citation, firefighter Lawrence is being recognized with a life-saving award. His bravery and actions on this call directly resulted in saving the life of another, and I'm extremely proud and honored to recognize him tonight with a unit citation and life-saving award.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for allowing us to have this time to recognize the extreme professionalism of the individuals from Albany Fire Department. Thank you.
So I was curious, how did anybody know she was under the bridge? Did somebody walk by and see her? Because wasn't it during the middle of the night or...
Anybody who's on that call want to answer that question? How did, how did they know that she was there?
A citizen walked over the bridge.
Somebody walked over the bridge. She was screaming and somebody walked over the bridge. Because it was 12:30 at night? 1:00? 1:00 in the morning? So somebody happened to be walking over the bridge, heard her screaming, looked down below and saw her.
Oh, my gosh, wow, yeah. That, just scary rescue, yeah. Thank you so much. It's like everyone, you know, had to have been just holding their breath to try, you know, be able to make sure they got everyone safe and, oh, my gosh, yeah.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, Albany Fire Department. Great job, so we're quite honored.
I'll say, in my life, I would never choose the profession that you're in. But God bless all of you that do.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service, so, thank you. Okay, next is Business from the Public. So it's, yep, right?
My name is Ray Hiltz. I live at 4728 Foxglove Loop. When I came here, I wasn't going to talk. But because of the fire department being here and there, not only do they save people from harm and fire, but they do our community a great service. I happened to be volunteering at the carousel a couple weeks ago. There was a young man named Emmett that had a birthday party. Well, it was a little slow at the time and I talked with the parents and I talked with Emmett. And anyway, eight families were supposed to show up with their children. None of them showed up. He was by himself. So Peggy, our executive director, called the fire department. They came, they rode the carousel with Emmett, they went outside and Emmett got his fire hat and went for a fire truck ride. And so I can just imagine that Emmett, when he saw his friends that weren't there, the thrill that he had saying, "I was rode in a fire engine." I can just imagine him telling his friends that.
Oh, yeah.
So not only myself, but I know Peggy, all the carousel people that were there, thanks the fire department.
Oh, that is just so wonderful.
Had we sent the bill yet for the...
I think that's just so wonderful, though, you know, for, you know, that poor little boy, just, I cannot imagine what would have been going through his mind, you know, when he was all excited for a birthday party and, you know, not having the guests show up. And hopefully it was something that was just missed days or miscommunication on that. And, but boy, he had a better birthday, I think, you know, having the fire department there and being able to ride the carousel with him. That's something he will always be able to have great memories of, so that's wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Ray, for sharing that story. Okay, anyone else from Business from the Public?
Good evening. I'm Jessica Nielsen at 1198 Northwest 22nd Street. I'm going to apologize once again to you all in advance. Public speaking is not a strong suit, so just be forewarned. I'm sure some of you could probably infer at least part of why I'm here today, but for the sake of transparency, and I'm going to come back to that word, I'm going to go ahead and sum up my goals. And that's, it's one word, it's priorities. Or rather, further edification regarding the goals pertaining to said priorities, yours and ours. I have a lot of questions, but I'm aware this is not the forum for back and forth. It's not, not how it works on nights like this. So I'll simply express some of my questions and I'll hope for further enlightenment at a later time. I'm curious what your guys' ultimate priorities are, the short term, the long term, and who it is who ultimately decides what one thing is more important than another? And I ask this because I'm kind of confused. According to your 2019 and 2021 biennial budget message, your priorities include maintaining appropriate levels of service, reorganizing and adjusting the structure of the budget accordingly. Looking at your program narrative for the Parks and Rec program, there's mention of expanding reach into underserved populations and target markets, offering opportunities for programs for youth and families to build skills and provide positive lifestyle and leisure options. So tell me, how closing a school and a library and possibly a pool fit into your self-detailed priorities? I'm confused still regarding your guys' plans for Maple Lawn, even prior to the most recent half a million dollar budget issue. At the close of the final biannual budget meeting, discussion about the future of Maple Lawn was focused on what we could do to keep it going as its own entity beyond just last year. We began discussing the many options for raising the necessary $148,000, if I remember correctly, a possible transition into funding via education, sponsorships. And back to that word transparency, it wasn't with transparency that you guys neglected to inform the community your intention was and is to take that school site from the preschoolers, regardless. And when were you guys going to let everybody know that the building was gone for those kids, that you've got something else more important in the works for that space? When were you going to tell us that no amount of fundraising or sponsorships was going to keep Maple Lawn supported by the city to any degree? When were you going to let everyone know that your Parks Department never intended to assist Maple Lawn with a fluid transition into a new supportive entity? I imagine you can understand we feel a little bit misled. I'm wondering if you had different priorities and maybe they changed. Just months ago, Mr. Trozen himself stated, "There is a significant deficit of preschool placements in Albany and that closing Maple Lawn would have a negative impact." Is everybody here okay with that? I've heard lots of legitimate concerns expressed within this forum over the course of several meetings regarding other serious issues that currently plague our growing community. Several meetings ago, the focus was on homelessness and associated crime, illicit drug abuse, and even the high associated healthcare costs. The mayor around the same time mentioned the exorbitant cost of cleaning up even one homeless camp. This stuff is a major expense for the community, both literally and figuratively. We've all heard the phrase, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." As a nurse who has spent the majority of the last decade, excuse me, working largely with our homeless population, it's a phrase of which I'm very fond, the decisions that are made now are going to lay the foundation for the city for our future. What do you guys think is more expensive, supporting community essentials like preschools and libraries and pools now, or continuing to foot the monstrous, ongoing, and growing financial burden that is crime, high rates of illicit drug abuse, homelessness, and the growing burden on the healthcare and welfare system? Are you guys aware there's a direct and disturbing correlation just between childhood literacy rates and adult incarceration rates? Would you guys like to discuss the statistics, excuse me, I hate this word, statistics regarding the long-term ramifications of cutting early childhood education and related resources in our area, now including a library? Have you guys run those numbers? Again, these decisions you make today regarding your priorities play a role in how our community is going to develop or not. As of right now, less than a quarter of our kids are or have been enrolled in preschool, some of the lowest rates in the state and the country. We've got lots of new housing developments and apartment complexes going in. How do you propose to address the growing population and related resource deficits? What's cheaper, cleaning up the homeless camps or keeping kids educated, involved, interested, and ultimately capable, intelligent, employed, and contributing adults? How will you manage that if your priorities now don't include education programs, libraries, pools, and related resources? So I've taken a lot of your time already this evening and for that, I thank you. In summary of my monologue here, I hope for and expect further assistance in answering these and many more questions that a handful of us have regarding your priorities with this biannual budget. You guys are in a unique position to advocate for and represent the needs of this community. I and others who support programs like Maple Lawn and our library and our pool, we look forward to your upcoming transparency, excuse me, transparency regarding pertinent information and your plans for our growing community. Thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you, Jessica. And you had some very good questions, and it is questions that we're all kind of mulling over, you know, to be able to address the budget woes. But there is going to be kind of a community question over the budget, which will be at Deluxe Brewing next Tuesday.
Seventeen.
Yeah, next Tuesday night.
Conversation.
Conversation. What time does it start?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. So I welcome you to come, but also I'd really like to sit down and maybe meet with you and kind of really try to kind of answer a lot of your questions. So if you're able to up to it and want to contact me, we can set up a time. I think there's a lot of kind of some history I can, you know, be able to kind of, you know, let you, let you know about and see. But I do know all of us want to be able to keep all of our programs as whole as we can. So that's what we're having to really look at. How are we going to be able to keep our programs whole, which is going to end up taking some additional revenue sources? So I welcome to meet with you and, you know, let you, you know, kind of see and help us, give us those ideas, too, so. Okay? You bet. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Oh, and then, let's see, we're going to be having the next on our agenda discussing revenue sources is October, October 9th also. Okay, anyone else from Business from the Public? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Next item is, this is 6A, and this is Adoption of Resolution, and this is for authorizing a request for permission from ODOT to place public art on state highway right away. So Kim, you get to come on board with Parks and Rec and you get to work on a fun project with some art.
Indeed. Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to chat tonight. So I am here with a resolution that's required by ODOT for us to submit our application to place public art on property that is ODOT property, but that we actually manage. And so, as you know, you've previously approved the art project. We've been working with ZD Morrison for the, for the piece. And the critical part now, being able to move forward, is actually getting approval from ODOT to place the sculpture. And as part of that application, they need an official resolution from our city council. So that's what's in front of you. We've also provided some design material. We've gone back and forth and worked with the Arts Commission to make sure that it is living up to their expectation and their vision. And hopefully, if we get a resolution, then we'll be able to complete our application shortly and with the hope of having an installation in the spring of 2020.
Wonderful. Has there been conversations with ODOT yet? If they are open to the idea of the location or...
So we have had conversations. In fact, we recently spoke with their, their specific district engineer who will be reviewing the application, just saying, "Is this a make or break? What are our chances?" And she said, "Go ahead and submit." So we are feeling very optimistic with the placement.
What were you going to say?
Yeah.
Go ahead, submit, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, questions? There is a resolution on page 11.
I would move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess I'd make one point. We have a gun to our head economically, and the amount of money we're talking about here is coming out of a different pot of money than the budget is. I realize that there are a lot of people that don't care where it's coming from. It's just we're spending money to do something that, well, we could be filling potholes or whatever, that's just not possible. So having made that point.
Yeah, good point.
I'm ready to vote.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is approving the exemption from competitive bidding requirements, and this is for the Hughes Fire Equipment. It's a resolution on page 14, and here comes the chief.
The almost-retired chief.
Just a little...
No short timer, no. So the fire department has identified a need to purchase a new engine, and we've been placing money in equipment, in our equipment replacement funds specifically for this purpose. Our fleet is aging with our oldest fire engine approaching 30 years of age, and our call volume is continuing to increase significantly as we're on pace this year to run 10,600 calls, which is a 12% increase over this time last year. So as a department, we evaluated our options for purchasing a new engine and determined that purchasing a Pierce fire engine from Hughes Fire Equipment out of Springfield, Oregon, was our most conducive to support our current operations and provide the most economical benefit to our community. This type of engine is available through an existing cooperative contract, and tonight I would request that the city council approve by resolution exemption from the competitive bidding requirements to allow us to purchase this engine. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Can we be challenged by somebody about this, the passin' dish?
No, did you want to address Alex's question?
Can we be challenged for eliminating a competitive piece?
I believe it has to have a protest period. It goes through a seven-day protest period. And if nobody protested it after the end of the seven days, then we're able to move forward with the contract.
Right, thanks, chief.
Question, if this is not unanimous, that does not make it a problem, as long as there is enough votes to pass it, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, anything.
For the record, I'm going to vote against this, not because I don't think that you need a fire engine or that I think that the fire engine should be replaced, going back to... Going back to, we have a gun to our head economically, and it's my opinion, even though I'm not a firefighter, that sending an engine on an ambulance call wears out engines faster. And I think there must be a way for us to use another four-wheel vehicle instead of we send a $40,000 or a $20,000 vehicle with two people in it rather than a $600,000 vehicle with wear and tear. So, as an explanation, that's it.
Yeah, Dick?
I'm in favor of buying the fire, but I know I'm going to be asked by constituents, "You know how many miles are on the one that we're retiring?"
We're actually not going to retire it quite yet. We need to, with that amount of call volume, we actually need to add an engine to our fleet.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm not sure how many miles the oldest engine has on it. I do not know that.
But mileage wouldn't be the big deal.
I am well aware of that. It's revolutions on the engine.
Right.
And have you replaced the motor on that, on that fire engine, do you know?
On our oldest engine? No, no, we've not. I don't believe, I mean, it's been in for repairs, and I don't remember it receiving a new engine at any point in time.
It'd be interesting to know what kind of mileage they get. I imagine you're going to, or do you plan to keep this until you buy yet another engine?
The oldest engine, we would keep for probably another two years, and then the goal would be to replace it in a couple of years.
In kind of, for your information, when we first went out for a place of fire levy in 2002, and the renewal was, the original funds was to have yearly funds being put into equipment replacement, because back then we did not have enough funds going towards equipment replacement. So that's where these funds are coming out of, is the equipment replacement fund that's set aside for that, for that purpose. And that's kind of that, what the voters had always voted on in the past was for equipment replacement, so.
And could I also ask, am I right that you send an engine along with the ambulance in case there's a fire and people on that crew have to go respond to a fire as well as a medical emergency?
So we don't always send an engine with an ambulance. It depends on the severity of the call. It all gets prioritized in the dispatch center, depending on the information that the caller gives when they call 911. If it's a less serious call, the medic unit will go by itself. If it's more serious, i.e. a heart attack, or respiratory arrest, or something like that, or cardiac arrest, or something along those lines, then we need the additional personnel to be able to carry out all the functions that are required. So it is a portion of them. They go in the engine so that way they're available for the next call, because you never know where that next call is. And if we split the crew up and we have them going in different locations, that makes it more difficult to get them back together. And I guess the other point that I would make is that there's a lot of pre-fire planning, pre-emergency planning that occurs in the cab of the engine en route to the call, where the lieutenant is giving commands to his crew. He's telling them what he wants them to do, communicating with them. So keeping them together in the same unit is a safety issue for us, and ultimately it leads to a better outcome once they arrive at the scene of the emergency.
Yeah, that way they don't have to go back to the firehouse, chuck in the engine, and then go try and put all that left in the burning building.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. There's a resolution on page 14.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. That's your last fire truck purchase.
What's that?
Your last fire truck purchase.
Last fire truck purchase.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar. I think there's an item to be pulled on.
Yeah, I want to pull seven A permanently.
Okay, all right. And so consent calendar will be for?
I move the rest of the consent calendar for approval.
Okay, all right.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Back page. And now we have a staff report over the process for municipal court judge interviews.
Good evening. So what I wanted to do tonight was talk to you all through the hiring process that we'll be going through for the municipal court judge. We have that coming up on October 7th, and that'll be an executive session. I've listed the candidates here that we'll be interviewing. There's four of them. I put the summary together for you so that you have something to take with you. And then tomorrow morning, we'll be sending an email follow-up with the information that I've listed below on the Thursday, the 12th. That's tomorrow. I'll be sending you a sample of the interview questions for council members to choose from. I'll be sending you the federal and state protected class information related to employment hiring practices. I'll be sending guidance on veterans preference, and there'll be a description of the veterans' preference and city's process in meeting this requirement. There'll be guidance on scoring candidates, a scoring key, and the process used to sum total points, and provide the eligible candidate's veterans' preference points. And then, based on what you provide back to Human Resources with the questions that I'm sending you, we'll be putting together the top seven to 10 questions for you for that interview process. And if you can get those to us by Wednesday, September 8th, that would be helpful in us getting those questions put together in a timely manner.
Did she say eighth? She meant eighth.
The 18th, sorry, Wednesday, September 18th. We're going to send out the candidate packets to you by Wednesday, October 2nd, and so you'll have their application and their resumes and cover letters and so forth in a nicely put-together packet. And then I, and the city manager, and the city attorney will be present through the interviews to assist with the interview process. And once the interviews have concluded, I will tally and finalize the panel's candidate scores and provide the information to council in executive session. And then the city council will then need to reconvene into open session for a vote to offer the municipal court judge position to the successful candidate.
So Dinette, seeing this when it comes to sample questions, what we've done in the past when it comes to other positions or even city manager is, there is the sample questions, but it's also if counselors want to have a certain question themselves, then usually we sometimes have left it as each counselor gets like two questions each, but they can choose over those or if there's something else that they want to fill. Is that okay?
It is. We're trying, we have 50 minutes for each candidate.
Right.
And so you want to limit, you know, usually the most you're going to get in is about 10 questions total in a 50-minute interview. What I might suggest is something that was suggested to me, if there's some questions that we can ask the candidates ahead of time, I'm happy to email a few questions to them and have them respond in writing to those questions, which would, might be a better way, if you, we give them some scenarios that you want them to respond to, make scenario questions, which we haven't, in my time here, in my 27 years here at the City of Albany, we've never recruited a municipal court judge. We've always directly appointed. And so this is a little bit of a different process and different questions than we've asked. You're going to see that the questions are very past practice for an attorney, if you will, or someone sitting on a bench type of questions. We asked Sean to assist us with those questions and kind of pulled from other jurisdictions who had interviewed prior candidates.
I mean, I'm just thinking that is when you send out the slate of any counselor has a certain question that they feel really needs to be asked, that can be, you know, vented through you.
Yes.
But it's just, this is the council's time of hiring this position, and we want to make sure the council is, you know, if there's something that they really feel should be asked, you know, let's have that a part of it.
So the key to this really is that, because it's going to be a city employee, we want to be careful that we ask questions consistently. So if you ask one candidate, we ask the same question of all the candidates, and that it's related to the job. So it'd be related to the essential functions of the job. So we can send the job description along with, well, the interview tomorrow. My email, I'll include the job description in that email.
Yeah.
So just, you know, if you have suggestions or questions, you just want to be sure that it's related to them.
Okay, yeah, good, yeah. So I think, well, Alex hasn't been through any of this process on any city positions and, but I think everybody else has enough, you know, experience, been through this process before, so. But yeah, but I just know there has been always questions in the past that, you know, it's kind of our political minds see things differently than staff's minds on that.
Yep, absolutely.
So it's just, you know, we, you know, there might be something that somebody might see that they would really like to kind of know from that.
So if there's a sub-specific subject matter that seems to resonate in the questions that come forward, I might put something back out that collectively asks that question is what I would just mention to you.
Yeah.
Question.
And then we're well aware that every candidate, we can't ask a diff, one question to one candidate and not to another one, so we have to be consistent.
And so if I also could just say that if I see something that possibly we could put out ahead of time, you know, and ask those questions ahead of time to be sure that we, the number of questions that we have is appropriate for the timeframe that we have.
Yep, exactly.
Timeframe concerns me because, I don't know, I've done a few hundred in my time, and during an interview, other things come up, questions that you didn't think about or after they made a presentation, then another question comes up. And I don't, the follow-up question, I don't see where that's available.
Well, when we talk about seven to 10 questions, some of them will go very quick, and some of them will take more time with the follow-up. So we leave 10 minutes extra. You'll see there's one hour apart. If we go over a little bit, that does happen. There's no doubt that does happen in our interview processes.
I mean, you're talking about something that we're spending over time, a couple million dollars in 15 minutes?
Fifty.
Fifty.
No, 15. You're talking about, that's how much money you, that's how much time you have for a given person.
I thought so too, Rich, but it is 15.
Five zero.
It's almost an hour.
Yeah.
There's an hour difference in between, between each candidate.
I heard 15 every time you said it.
I heard.
Never mind.
I'm sorry. On the sheet of paper in front of you, under interview time, it'll show the start time for each one of them.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
And it could be two, council. You might want to narrow it down to two, and then you might want to interview, go through interviews again, so.
I think we need to reserve that.
Absolutely.
Yep.
What kind of a day are the weekends are typically?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a normal workday, Monday.
Yeah, Mike, did you have a question?
Yes.
I could get here earlier if I needed more time. Or stay later.
Okay.
What if you know a couple of the attorneys personally?
Yeah.
Sean, you want to address that?
Well, I mean, it's, I was going to say, unless, unless they, I mean, when you say you know them personally, if you know of them, it's not going to be considered a conflict if they represented you in something before or on the other side if they were, and I don't think any of these, these candidates were prosecutors. If they prosecuted somebody before and maybe you have hard feelings about it or something. But if you, you know, just because you know the person, it's hard not to know some of these people. I mean, some of them have been here, yeah, one of them, one of them, I think, born and raised here, so it's hard not to know them.
So if you, by know them, do you mean acquaintance know?
Do they sit at your dinner table?
More than once in different capacities, yes.
So in our, in our world, sitting, we remove ourselves.
Okay, wow. There's two of them there that I'd probably have to remove myself.
Yeah, I'd hate to see that. I think if it's not a relative, I think we have to move forward.
It isn't a conflict, I mean.
Well, if you don't think it's a conflict, that's fine.
I don't.
When we did city manager, we all knew Jorge, too. We always had known.
So Mike knows how, when that candidate's up, you can disclose that you, you know them and, you know, but you feel that you're not going to be impartial, you can make an impartial decision and go from there, yeah.
Unless you don't think you can, then you could say, "Well, I really like this person." I just wanted to bring that up.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that.
No, that, I mean, that is good to disclose it, but yeah, but no longer you can make a?
I would just note the difference between Jorge is that was a promotional process in-house, and he may have sat at some of your dinner table, I don't know, but that would be the difference.
Yeah. Okay, council, you got any other questions for this process? And is everybody available on that day?
Should we send our questions to Sean before they send to you?
The instructions will be in your email tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure I get that email.
I will.
Okay.
I knew it was going to be a surprise to you.
But everybody is available on that October 7th.
October 7th.
So far, yes.
Is what it is, got to be available, part of the territory.
It was part of the job, so.
So, okay.
Part of the job.
So that's the early session at 15:00?
That's correct.
Yeah, 3:00.
Yeah.
We'll give it, we'll, it's, we have 15 minutes together prior to our first candidate, just to walk through the questions.
So if the first interview's at 3:15, I would put on your schedules to maybe be here by 2:45 so we can kind of go over questions and stuff beforehand.
Talk about process.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is business from the council, Bessie, anything this evening?
No, I just want to make one comment. It's happened so often the last little while. I swear, the bicyclists in Albany don't know a law if they looked them in the face. I have come to so many close encounters with them, and I don't know if the police gave out tickets or what, but, I mean, they will come in front of you, they will be, not in the bike lane, but, and then they'll turn, it's just really, I mean, it's dangerous.
What are you talking about? Who?
Bicyclists.
Bicyclists.
Yeah, I mean, I was coming today, and it was right behind, right beside us, there was a bunch of cars, and all of a sudden, he whoops and hollers. And I'm like, of course, that brings your attention all through the hill. And then he gets to the intersection, and he does what he damn well pleases. He doesn't obey the laws, and I just think that, you know, I know, trying not to look at Hasso, but.
Hasso, Hasso doesn't do that.
No, he doesn't. I don't think he does.
He just doesn't stop at stop signs.
Well, no, and I had yesterday, so I'm at the stops, I'm waiting, you know, it's on 34th, busy traffic, and then, then here's a gal on going the wrong way on the bike lane. It was a good thing I looked to my right and didn't pull out to try to get in the traffic. She was coming the wrong direction, and yeah, it is scary at times, but yeah.
And then one other thing, I heard on the news that, I think Seattle is going to try a new thing with their, I still like Marilyn's phrase of unhoused people. They're going to give them bus tickets to any place where they have people they know. And I'm thinking, isn't that what other cities have done to us, you know?
Send them to San Francisco. Some of what we've done to them, too.
Yeah, I mean, so it's just something that they're trying, and I hope, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm thinking.
We've been getting some new folks coming in.
Yeah.
Greyhound does not stop here, so maybe they'll go right onto Carvel's.
That's a good idea. Anyway, that's all I have.
County dropping people off at the base of the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Ridge, do you have anything this evening? Alex?
I attended the Casa luncheon today, and it was a very enlightening luncheon, met a lot of great people.
It was at Lebanon this time?
In Lebanon, Buller Inn, Buller Creek.
Right, they usually have once a year here.
Boulder Falls, yeah.
Yeah, they usually have it once a year here.